I will call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the City of Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. This is the regular meeting for Thursday, October 3, 2024, and it is 1:00 p.m. We will begin with a flag salute, and I will ask Councilmember O'Keefe to please lead us in the flag salute today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, sovereign, and just one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. And would the city clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Malato, present. Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protemweil?
Here.
Mayor Downs?
I am here. And I want to start today by wishing our Jewish friends and neighbors a very happy Rosh Hashanah today. My wife, Jerry, just reminded me that I should do that at the start of the meeting, so thank you for reminding me. And our first item on the agenda today is a presentation from the Palm Springs International Airport on the master plan, and I will ask the city's commissioner to the airport commission, Keith Young, to please make this introduction. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor Downs, council members. It's always a pleasure to be in your presence to provide an update on the details of the exciting developments at Palm Springs International Airport. As you know, there's a variety of new and exciting things occurring at the airport. If you haven't flown through recently, there's a variety of new retail concessions, as well as food and beverage options for your trips outbound and inbound. The airport will also be having new air service this fall in season, some exciting new developments there. Porter Airlines will be flying directly to Toronto. You may have read this week that Frontier Airlines will be returning and providing service to both San Francisco and Denver, so additions to those markets. United Airlines will provide nonstop service to Dulles in Washington, D.C., and Delta will be providing service to JFK, so exciting service developments there. The airport was recently awarded a $503,000 FAA grant for the purchase of eight zero-emission vehicles, which will replace some gas-powered vehicles in the airport's fleet in a commitment to sustainability that we're very proud of. And finally, S&amp;P Global has recently reaffirmed its A-rating of Palm Springs Airport in terms of finances, management structure, as well as the travel trends for the airport. So those are exciting current developments. But we're principally here today to talk about the master plan. All those are indicators of how things are going presently, but as you all know well, over the next 10 to 20 years, there will be many more residents in our city and throughout the valley, as well as many more users of the airport. So I am delighted today to be joined by a team of experts with the airport and additional expertise from outside who will share with us a brief presentation on the airport's master plan. I provided some of these details to you previously, but these are some more methodical and comprehensive updates that we'd like to provide to you. I'm joined today by Mark Ware, who is the stakeholder outreach lead for the master plan project. He's accompanied by Victoria Carpenter, who is part of the airport management team. She's airport administrative manager, and also Jake Ingrascia, communications specialist, I believe. Apologies if I'm wrong in that, Jake, who will be available to answer your questions. We realize we don't have a great deal of time for this presentation today. We'll try to make it compact, and if there are questions that are, there's not time for today, please feel free to reach out to me afterward, and I will do my very best to either answer those or to seek those answers on your behalf. So with that, I welcome Mark Ware to the stage.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much, Commissioner Young, for your dedication to the Airport Board of Commissioners, and thank you to the City of Rancho Mirage for providing this forum for us to give this presentation. So I'm going to dive right into this. So what is an airport master plan? Well, an airport master plan is essentially a federal-required document that provides a strategy for the future for what the airport looks like. It's to identify new projects to support long-term growth and safety. But remember, this is only a plan. So each component of that master plan has to go through its own separate funding process and comply with state and federal regulations. So why do we need an airport master plan? Well, Palm Springs Airport was built to accommodate 1.5 million annual passengers. We're well above that now. With what happened during COVID, with air service kind of realigning towards tourist markets like Palm Springs, we've seen dramatic growth in that passenger service. And we also need it because we need this master plan to look at how we can preserve iconic elements of the airport, like the Wexler Terminal. We needed to look at how we can continue to provide an enhanced passenger experience, comply with the latest airport safety requirements, and begin new sustainability initiatives. But also, we need to accommodate for future growth. So the airport is rapidly increasing in popularity. So in 2002, we hit a little over 3 million annual passengers. By 2032, we're looking at 4.7, and on the high end of our estimates, by 2042, we could be surpassing 6 million annual passengers. Tourism is surging in the region. We have a 4% increase since 2017 to 2022. Residents are also increasing within the area. This is one of the fastest-growing areas of California and faster than what's growing in the United States. We have a 5% increase there. With all of this, there's also additional parking demand and rental car demand. So you have public spaces that will need to be increased for additional parking, rental car spaces basically doubling by 2042. And so there needs to be a plan around all of that. Where is all this growth going to happen? And so this process here lays out what that looks like. There's a pre-planning process, investigative process, then solutions and implementation. And during that, we're looking at getting public comments and outreach during that entire process. Right now, we are basically between number two and number three. So let me go to where we are and what we're hearing from the public. So what we're hearing is that they want to maintain the access at Tequetes and El Cielo. They also want to make sure we preserve the Wexler Building and use that as inspiration for the rest of the airport. They want to consider walking distance and that ease of use of the airport. People really comment about how it's an easy airport. It's convenient. They like the quaintness, the charm of it. They like the indoor-outdoor feel. Those are all things we want to preserve, and we want to enhance as we work through this modernization effort. So several months ago, the Palm Springs City Council looked at the variety of alternatives that the commission brought to them, and they settled upon this one, and they asked the commission to go back and look at and provide another alternative for where the rental car center is going to be. So Alternative 1A is the North Site Rental Car Center. You'll see that in the orange. That is a proposed location for the rental car center. This would be a rental car center that is four stories tall, with the fifth being a rooftop parking. Two would be buried, and that would continue to allow for easy access, a walkability to the rental car center. This is just some different renderings of what that looks like. This is what it looks like when you leave the Wexler Terminal, looking towards the north. That's two stories shown, with a third would be the parking on the third floor there. So as part of this process, we were asked by the city council to go back and look at an alternative to provide another option for the rental car site on the south side. So we are working through that process now. It still has to go to the commission and then the council for approval, but this is where the current location is for Alternative 2, the south-side rental car center area. This is a four-level structure with a fifth floor for parking. One thing to mention about that last option is that that would require us to provide busing to and from that facility. So it's a little bit of a different change from the north side. So sustainability is at the heart of the master plan. I just want to mention this. This is really important to us. So we're looking at, with all the changes and improvements around the airport, we would continue to put out drought-tolerant landscaping. We would do infrastructure improvements to support electric vehicles. We would continue to look at ways to make taxiway improvements to minimize emissions. And of course, use and implement more solar for electricity generation. This here is an estimated timeline of what this looks like for Phase 1. So Phase 1 would be to build out a north concourse there on the north side of the Wexler Terminal. So we would start and work through the environmental analysis, and by the time the construction is done, that'll get us through the end of 2029. The cost of that is around $880 million. So how airports are funded is it's all funded internally. There's no tax dollars being used from the city or the county to fund this effort. Concessions, concession fees, as well as parking fees, as well as landing fees, those is what funds these projects. So I want to end with by saying that all public comments should be submitted through this website, palm springs airport masterplan.com. That's the official place for anyone listening here or online to submit their comments. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, as well as with Victoria from the airport. Thank you.
Would you wait until public comments? And when we have public comments, you'll be up. Mark, would you stay for public comments?
Absolutely.
Follow in a few minutes.
Yeah, specifically about the airport.
Please wait until public comments. I'll ask for public comments after we finish with this presentation. I wonder if I can convince you to wait until public comments. I would appreciate that very much. Thank you. Okay. Any comments from my colleagues? So, Mark, I think you mentioned there, what about the airport was designed for about 1.5 million travelers. We have about 3 million today?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we've got a long way to go.
You have a long way to go.
For your presentation.
Appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thank you, Keith, for your service on the Airport Commission for the city. Okay, our next presentation today is about the Children's Discovery Museum, and I will ask our councilmember, Michael O'Keefe, who is our board member who serves on the Discovery Museum, to make this introduction today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. One of my favorite duties is to be the city representative to the Children's Discovery Museum, since it reopened in May after it had been closed for four years. It's been such a success. They had over 8,000 people come through in the first month. If you haven't seen it, it is beautiful, colorful, creative. It provides a unique hands-on learning experience for children and their families. Cindy Burrisson is the CEO, and her dedicated team have made this into much more than a museum, really. It's an experience that's found nowhere else in the valley. So if you haven't been, you should take your favorite child or grandchild and check it out. You'll definitely be glad that you did. And before I introduce Cindy, we have, I think, a brief video from right when we were getting ready to reopen.
... is so full of joy, and I just can't believe this moment is finally here. It's been a long time coming. I'm Cindy Burrisson, and I'm the CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. I describe the Children's Discovery Museum as a place of joy where kids learn about themselves and the world around them with their families. We are reopening, finally, after four years having been closed to the pandemic. We are reopening bigger and better than ever. A reimagination consists of 40 new exhibits, and everything is larger than life. It's like living inside of a cartoon, and we're so excited to welcome the community back. The Children's Discovery Museum has been here for almost three decades, and it's a staple in our community. People have come here as kids, with their kids, with their grandkids, and so it's a place that really creates core memories for families and allows them that opportunity to have fun together. We are located in the beautiful city of Rancho Mirage at 71701 Gerald Ford Drive. We are a nonprofit, so we rely on donations, and we were fortunate to have the City of Rancho Mirage. A lot of the other cities came forward, a lot of community grants and foundations and individual donors. We raised about $2 million towards the project, and then we got a line of credit from First Bank to help us close that gap. We have memberships available for families, an annual membership. We also have daily admission, which is $19.95 per person for anybody one year or up. We are reopening Friday, this Friday, finally, May 24, for Memorial Day weekend. We'll be open all weekend long from 10 to 5, and then we'll resume our regular hours after that, which will be Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5. We look forward to opening the doors on Friday, welcoming all of our families back, and being a pillar in the community for learning and family interaction.
So now we have a new season upon us, and I'm delighted to invite CEO, the busiest woman in town, Cindy Burrisson, to give us an update on the wonderful museum.
Thank you. Well, that's my presentation. Thank you very much. No, I'm just kidding. Mayor Downs and city council members and staff, thank you for having me. I'm so excited. This is the first opportunity I've had to present to you since we've been open. We've been open for a few months now, and I'm excited to show you some of the things that are going on with the museum. So attendance, we have had great attendance. The numbers that you see in May was for one week's worth of attendance. We opened Memorial Day weekend, so we hit it right out of the park right away, and we've been busy ever since. September, we've seen a little bit of a lull just because school is back in session, so obviously that's a time where we experienced a little bit of a decline in attendance. But we typically close for two weeks in September also, so something to note is we didn't do that this year. We stayed open because we had been closed for so long. We wanted employee morale to stay high. We wanted them to be really invested in the museum. And so what we did is we decided to, welcome September, we decided to implement some new programming and such. We really put a focus on field trips now that school is back in session. We have several field trips a week, and we're booking all the time. We have some paid programming as well that we've introduced, including our Little Chef's Program, which is a four-week program for two-and-a-half-to-five-year-olds with a parent to come and experience cooking together, as well as little scientists where they can do different science projects and things like that, and that was very well received. And we've done all kinds of different events to bring in folks who haven't been to the museum yet. So we had Grandparents' Day, which was amazing. We had a whole different demographic of people that came in. We had some of our members that typically come, but with their grandparents, so it was great for them to come. They spend the money in the gift shop, and they added themselves to memberships, so that was great. We've also done a big push in the community as well. We consider ourselves community partners at every opportunity. So we had one of our art projects on a Saturday go directly to the firefighters that are fighting the fires here in California. So we have a whole bunch of art projects that we have mailed out to CAL FIRE, and they're going to distribute those to the firefighters. We also celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month this month with Spanish Storytime and different arts and projects that related to Hispanic Heritage Month. We had last Saturday a super fun Nickelodeon Worldwide Day of Play, where it was through the Association of Children's Museums and Nickelodeon, and there were 168 different museums worldwide that participated in just a day of play, exactly what it sounds like, what we're the best at. So we did a bunch of outdoor activities in the heat. We did tug-of-war. They were super strong. They beat our staff legitimately. We thought we were going to have to play, but they were really strong. Three-legged races, potato sack races, arts and crafts, storytime, bubbles, you name it. It was such a fun day. This is our October schedule, so you can see that we've got a lot of programming on the docket, just to keep things interesting. We have a lot of people that come every single day, so we want them to always have a different experience. And then for those who are new to the museum, we want them to see all the exciting things that we do. These are some of the upcoming events that we have. We have a fundraiser this Friday that's a trivia night, as well as we're participating in the golf cart parade. We're doing a Halloween event at the museum and lots of other things. For Halloween, we're closing at 2 that day, and we're going to welcome kids. It's a free community event to come and do safe trick-or-treating. We'll have candy and pencils and toys and games and all kinds of fun things for them to participate in, from 3 to 5. We have our third annual Jingle Bell Rock. A lot of you came to that the last couple of years, and this year it's presented by the Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission. Thank you very much, Erin Espinoza, and the rest of everyone who's on that commission for being our presenting sponsor for that. Another great free community day, just to celebrate the winter holidays and get our community to the museum, enjoying all of the festivities that we have there. We also have a brand-new event that we hope will be an annual event hereafter. On November 10, we're partnering with Building Bridges for Special Needs and the Fenixia Foundation to present an inclusive community event with neurodivergent artists to sell their arts and crafts, and we have free gift wrapping, and it'll be an opportunity for nonprofits that serve that community, as well as these artists, to come and have a great day at the museum. We are forming partnerships like crazy. Again, we consider ourselves a community collaborator, so these are some of the folks that we're working with, different nonprofits for sure, that we are inviting in to experience the museum with their groups, as well as the different school districts. Disney and Cotino we're working with. You can see we're really trying to get out there and make sure everybody is aware of the museum and the treasure that we are in this community. And of course, we've got to partner with the Firebirds, so we've got lots going on with them. We have special promotions where it's applicable for kids' events like the Hot Wheels. We also have an upcoming event with the Ice Plex where we're doing sort of a cross-promotion there. We'll be volunteering again, so if anybody wants to volunteer for the museum selling hot dogs and other things, hit me up. It's very lucrative for the museum. We're going to be doing Firebird Fridays quarterly, where our staff and anybody that comes to the museum that's wearing Firebird's merch will get some tchotchkes and things like that. And then we have Kids' Day, which is the greatest thing. The whole day at the museum, or excuse me, at the arena is going to be to benefit the museum. So we'll be doing the Chukapuck that you've seen. We're going to be doing a fundraiser in the compound. We're going to be doing all kinds of fun activities around that and selling tickets. So don't buy tickets for that day. Buy them from us. This is really the backbone of the museum. We couldn't be successful without these folks. This is our team, and they're just amazing. We get more reviews about the team than the exhibits. We get more feedback about them than anything, and they really come to work every day. We have a culture of joy. We celebrate that every opportunity, and they really make the experience for our guests. The four staff members that you see there on the right, that's Caitlin, Alexis, and Bert, which are part of our front desk team, our visitor service guides, and then our museum manager, Lexi, have been nominated as champions of hospitality for the Visit Greater Palm Springs celebration, so we're hopeful that one or all of them will win. But we wanted to recognize them, as well as the rest of our staff, for being amazing. We're working on some signature fundraising events that I will let everybody know about when they come up. We have one already planned at Las Casas de Nuevas. On January 28, we'll be expanding the fundraiser that we did last year, making it bigger and better. And then we're also putting together one at the Vault at Bighorn as well in the spring. And most of all, I wanted to thank the city. You've not only been great financial supporters of the museum, but also just the care that you've given to myself and to our staff, and coming into the museum, bringing donuts. Michael, you're amazing to have on our board as our city liaison, and all of you, just thank you so much on behalf of our board and our staff and myself. Thank you for caring for the museum. Any questions?
We are delighted that the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert is again open. Michael, any closing comments?
Just go. If you haven't been, you won't believe it. It's really a great place. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Cindy. Okay, and it is now time for non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to anything on their mind that is not on the agenda. Please bear in mind that there is a three-minute limit, so please be advised that if you hit your three-minute timeframe, that I will ask you to please conclude your comments and return to your seat. If you wish to make a comment about one of the presentations, you may do so. Please bear in mind also that this is not an interactive question-and-answer session. This is a public comment session, and you may make any comment that you wish, and I will ask you to go ahead and make whatever comment you wish to make.
Ma'am, if you can come up to the podium?
Please come to the podium. And please remember, this is not an interactive question-and-answer session. If you want to ask them a question, please do so later. This podium right here.
So you can ask a question about the agenda? The stuff that was on the agenda for the flight path with the new construction? You can ask a question about that, or no?
You may ask a question, but we can't engage in an interactive
But you can't answer it?
We can't engage in an interactive discussion with you. If it's not on the agenda, it's against the Brown Act for us to do that.
Okay, but it is on the agenda, so I could?
Please go ahead and do so.
Okay.
We can't engage in a back-and-forth discussion with you.
Okay, I'll keep it under three minutes. The website that was listed on the, could I get it on the PowerPoint? I wasn't able to write it down.
The meetings are recorded and on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. And then also, the flight path with the new construction, will that be changed?
Again, we can't engage in interactive back-and-forth. You can make a comment. If you don't like the flight path, let them know.
Okay, thank you. That would go to the website. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'll go to the city clerk to handle the rest of non-agenda public comments. Please, Kristy.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Ornellis.
Mayor Downs, council, city staff and guests here today. My name is Eric Ornellis. I am a communications specialist at the Annenberg Foundation Trust at Sunnylands, president at Safe Schools Desert Cities, and a board director at the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce. And I'm happy to provide you with a business update today. The Chamber of Commerce continues to grow and expand membership and services to the business community. We are proud to announce that our membership has grown to over 630 members. With our strong partnership from the city, economic development is growing and more robust, the community more connected, and a prosperous season is being planned for all. We continue to thrive with the Move Small Business Forward campaign and look forward to the New Shop Local Gift Card Program partnership. Chamber staff is also growing this week. Two new associates, a Director of Business Development, Jo Beth Prodom, and intern Isabella Roche Isano, are wonderful additions to an already great team. And of course, we hope to see everyone at the State of the City Thursday, October 10, at the Rancho Las Palmas Omni Hotel. The future is bright for Chamber members and the community at large. At Sunnylands, we are now open to the public for our 14th season. House tours have resumed, and October tickets are now available. At the Center and Gardens, the William Haynes Exhibition remains on view for one more season, and later this month, Sunnylands will once again participate in the CV Coachella Valley Days of Los Muertos collaborative. The gardens will be decorated with papel picado, decorative paper, colorful decorative paper, nichos, which are shadow boxes, and ofrendas, which are altars. A Mexican tradition, the altars honor and celebrate loved ones who have passed. In addition, on November 1, the Pixar film Coco will once again be screened on the Great Lawn, and that is November 1. The dates for CV Days of Los Muertos at Sunnylands are October 30 through November 1, and of course, admission to the Sunnylands Center and Gardens is always free, and so the Pixar film Coco will also be free as well. And finally, our popular outdoor wellness programs, including yoga and tai chi on the lawn, will resume on Friday, November 1. We are grateful to the City of Rancho Mirage for your continued support of the business community, area leaders, professionals, and nonprofit organizations. Your partnerships are greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Happy to have you here today. Sunnylands is such a remarkable spot and event location for this city, and I really enjoy the Movies on the Green. That's a lot of fun.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Eric.
The next speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
Hello, City Council. I'm pleased to see you again. In May 2022, I got a fraudulent termination of tenancy for my future eviction based on 14 false allegations about me harassing bullies who lived on both sides of me. I tell everyone I know since May 2022 that I say, "Everyone." A crime was committed against me, so I act really strange, and that's why I shake. I'm so thin, I'm skin and bones, and I'm not myself, and so if I seem strange, please understand, everybody understands, and nobody asks me to explain it further, which is so helpful, because I don't want to talk about it to anybody, of course, and it's very complicated, very. I want to read the last paragraph I wrote this morning at the library here. I'd like to explain why this crime happened to me. Both Marcus and Mr. Both Marcus and Mr. Hagerman rose up the ranks to positions where they had no experience. On top of that, Mr. Hagerman's plate is beyond too full. Really, I can see that. Too many jobs. You know, he's fabulous at some things, the other things he's brand new at, doesn't really get. I turned out to be the guinea pig in gaining experience for the housing authority here. And unfortunately, it's had a bad effect on me, but I believe that it's for my betterment ultimately, because I'm a spiritual person, and I know that I need to gain in wisdom, and I'm happy for it and grateful. But anyway, I had a whole different speech today. I never know what exactly to say. I just keep pouring it out, pouring it out. Can you help me, please? This is what's really happening. Let me testify. Do you? I've written so many times. This whole thing is taking over my life completely, because it's a life and death situation for me, where this is my home. I've been here since 2009. I brought my mother out here just so she could die in our home here. It's my home, and I'm a good, good person. I got framed. And I want you to know, I'm asking to be restored to what is rightfully mine. I want to make this situation well, healthy. I want to heal it, because we can all do it together. And I think it's a good idea to listen to what I have to say, because, you know, I've lived here 72 years, and I paid attention. So I want you to know my civil rights. Oh, I'm out of time. Okay, so it's all written there. Some of it maybe I shouldn't have said. I'm going to wait until after this meeting, and you guys have your private time, to get a response from you. I think it's a good idea to be law-abiding in housing. Good idea. Really good. Thank you so much.
Kristen Kramer.
Hi, thank you. I want to thank you guys for all your service. I've been living here for almost two years. I live in Marata Estates. So as such, I'm up and down that hill a lot. And I wanted to bring up a couple of safety issues that may seem minor, but there's a sign at the bottom of the hill where 111 meets Frank Sinatra, and it says, Don't Make a Right on Red. So I see people doing it a lot, not a lot, but and it's all sorts of people. It's landscape people. It's people that live up there. It's impatient people, et cetera. I'm just wondering if maybe once a month or something, we could set up sort of a sting or a trap, or maybe there's a camera there. I don't know. But obviously, that sign is there. Presumably, someone got hurt at some point, so I just want to avoid that in the future. The other thing is, and I don't know if this is solvable, but boy, the time goes by really quickly. So on the on the way up, past the Ritz and all the way down, I always see people, and I always feel like they're in danger, whether they're wearing all black, because they just landed and they're from New York, or whether they're, you know, super hot and they need water. But there's near accidents with pedestrians that are walking up there, and they're trying to get on trails and such. I brought the issue up one time before, and I was told that between the Indians, between the Ritz Carlton, between Marata Estates, between the city of Rancho Mirage, I'm not sure whether we'll ever be able to get like some sort of pathway for pedestrians up there, but I certainly think it would help. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it's been on my mind since I've moved here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Fitzgerald.
I feel compelled to come before you after seeing emails and hearing discussions regarding these FPPC opinions, Councilwoman Meg Marker and a quote-unquote Marker radio host. I do have a name. Feel free to call me Jim Fitzgerald Fitz, Jimmy Fitz, Fitz the Jazz Man, or Crypto Fitz. My company, Wendy Jane Productions, has been in business 29 years. I've never been an employee of Marker Broadcasting. I was here in February of last year at the invitation of Councilwoman Marker to discuss my ideas regarding the city's 50th anniversary. I was excited to offer my services pro bono to a city that I've had so many great memories of as a resident and business operator. I was grateful that Councilwoman Marker felt that I was the best producer promoter for the job, given my rich Rancho Mirage history, and that she wanted to introduce me to council. Never did Councilwoman Marker ever suggest or imply that she was looking to financially benefit from my efforts if I were to produce a 50th celebration. There are several exemptions for this FPPC opinion that could have been explored, including recusal on votes, the norm for city council members. I feel I have been caught in the crosshairs of publicity and acrimony among council members. I am proud of my good name and reputation in this valley, and would like to share a few highlights. Between 98 and 2005, I was both entertaining director for the Ritz Carlton Rancho Mirage and the lodger Rancho Mirage, produced music concerts on the croquet lawn with well over 50,000 attendees through those years, including social soirees, tree lightings, I can go on and on. I created the Rancho Mirage Art Affair Model that was followed by the city for 18 years. And regarding the art affair, I want to make this very clear, that I had a relationship with the city of Rancho Mirage long before Councilwoman Marker was on this council. I was under contract as the event producer promoter for the art affair for 15 years. I was asked by the city to produce the debut concerts for the new amphitheater grand opening. It was a huge success. I produced many concerts under the stars on the fifth fairway of Rancho Las Palmas Resort. Thousands enjoyed those evenings under the stars. I produced concerts at the Weston Mission Hills. In 2009, I was honored as Rancho Mirage Distinguished Citizen of the Year. 2016, I created the desert's first outdoor ice rink at the river, a huge hit, with all the restaurants reporting December sales increases of 23% year over year. My wife Wendy and I, our company Wendy Jane Productions, have had a major economic impact on this city, consistently filling hotel rooms and restaurants, which is the goal, isn't it? These are just some of the highlights. I won't go down my resume of events across the rest of the valley or prior to moving to the valley. I wish you continued success. Crypto Fitz, you know, the more you listen, the more you learn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fitz. And thank you very much for your years of service and your relationship with the city. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, city council of Rancho Mirage, city employees, contract employees. Today, to take up my three minutes, which I really enjoy, I want to throw the gauntlet down between COD and RMU, Rancho Mirage University. This valley, so-called valley, like any other place, needs competition. COD needs competition. COD is not a very good college. RMU has a state-of-the-art library, a state-of-the-art observatory, very well-to-do citizens. They need Rancho Mirage needs a higher education institution. For one thing, to diminish the youth flight. A lot of the youth that graduate from high school in this area, they they don't have a good, solid higher education. COD won't do it. So that's why RMU needs to start a university. Just think about Harvard University in Massachusetts. All they had is wilderness, and they started a university. So there's no reason why Rancho Mirage cannot start its own university. All you got to do is start with a few classrooms. You don't need to build a multi-billion dollar establishment. You just need to get the idea and get it rolling. Do something. So the saying goes, all of the roads of the world connect together. That's a hyperbole, of course. But just think, just think the way Putin bombs Ukraine, the cities, not the military, the citizens, the fool, the fool. Thank you very much.
Patrick Lowry.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Just a couple of quick comments to establish some credibility for my appearance. I am a 20-year resident of Rancho Mirage. And a couple of things here. My wife and I are both million-mile travelers. So the airport's getting really busy, but I must tell you, we never bump into anybody that doesn't have a smile. Happy to tolerate this for a while. Great people, and I compliment the airport for that. Also, we give to the Children's Museum and our foundation, the Adam St. Martin Foundation, in memory of our son. We'll begin the process of approving the Children's Museum and giving to them. So again, I'm an established, what would you call me, an established person living in Rancho Mirage. I care for the city. I give to the city. Here I am participating with the city. Now, the one thing I really want to stress here is my concern about safety. And I know I'm kind of hardcore on this. I'm looking at the contract for 2001 to 2024, I think. It's been updated, I think, Mr. Wild, because you're on the original signature. This has a performance guarantee. We're not getting it. I have to assume that the new contract has a performance guarantee. I want to make sure we get it. Let me give you the performance guarantee. 83 hours a day of police officers on our streets. That includes two motorcycle officers. Folks, I haven't seen a motorcycle officer for months. On the weekends, you don't see sheriff cars. No, they're there. I know. Okay? But you don't see them much. During the week, as you travel, maybe as you came here, you didn't see a sheriff's car. That's a bold statement. I mean, you didn't see one. Cops bad? Heck no. These are good people. I like them. I talk to them. I tried to dialogue about getting some of the watch the streets, because the speeding is terrible. Okay? The other fact is, the crime rate were among the highest in property and theft in the valley. Now, we argue on how that is statistically set. It doesn't matter. The playing field of measurement for all the cities is the same. We're 1 in 24. That means one of 24 persons is going to have a property incident in Rancho Mirage this year. It's one of the worst in the valley. Now, the sheriff is real direct on this in his statements. We want to be on the streets, because we know that by being on the streets stops crime. So why don't we get to the proactive side of sherifying, not to the reactive side? Again, we've got a contract. Contract does all the things a contract does. I am nearly a contract expert for 35 years, dealing with county cities, from Teamsters to California Seers Association. Good contract. Okay? And here are the performance elements. It's got a promise to perform. It does. Terms and conditions for that performance, it's right here in writing. Okay? And the performance itself, the performance isn't there. Good cops, let's get them on the streets. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Go Firebirds.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay, please step up and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Tolkheim, and I'm a 27-year resident of Rancho Mirage. And when I came 27 years ago, I was a hospital administrator. I was in administration first at Desert Regional as a chief operating officer, and then CEO at JFK, and then CFO and COO at Eisenhower. And so I was here a couple of weeks ago when you had Resolution 2024 that with regard to relationships and contracts and so on. And, you know, coming from health care, it was a started as a big target with the DOJ in the 80s for fraud and abuse, following Department of Defense in the 70s. And, you know, there's a lot of physician and hospital and clinics and pharmaceutical and medical device companies. And so it's very important to have those rules in place. So we had to follow rules, you know, starting in the 80s and 90s and so on. And so every year, I had a conflicts of interest statement that I would fill out. And, you know, we had, I was a CFO at two different facilities, the last one being Eisenhower for 16 of the 32. So I know all the policies and procedures, multiple bidding and everything. So I was pleased to see that this city, you know, I watched the city of LA, and obviously, they have a lot of problems with the city council. You know, I joke, I'm in real estate development now. I said, I'm glad I don't develop in New York and Chicago, because I wouldn't know who all to pay off and how much. But anyway, so I'm glad you had a case that was brought up a couple of weeks ago, and I was glad to hear that there, you know, things are looked at and reviewed, and that was turned down. And, you know, I did a little checking. I'm a CPA accountant, so I, you know, and it appeared, and it was good to hear Jim Fitzgerald talking about it. It doesn't appear that it even qualified as a problem. And so that's the issue that I'm here to speak about is it definitely, if you have direct contracts and so on, it makes sense to have rules against them. There are, you know, certain exceptions and so on. But basically, I would hate to see just general things passed to where if I'm setting up or have a hospital in Rancho Mirage, where I have the city telling me who I can do business with. You should have your own policies and procedures. You should have multiple bids. You should have recusals. I think you have all that. And you should have rules for following up on that. And as a CFO and being over the county, and I've worked with my staff too, and we were able to find inappropriate agreements years ago, and between collection agencies and so on. But it basically is important for each city or each organization to have their own rules and not simply put out something to other companies or me and say, you can't do business. If you do business with this company, you can't do business with the city of Rancho Mirage. So anyway, I was glad to hear Mr. Fitzgerald explain his situation. He certainly had a longstanding relationship with the city of Rancho Mirage, so it shouldn't have really been an issue in and of itself, because it's been a longstanding relationship. And I came to find out there wasn't even any financial relationships between them. So just make sure there is a reason for it, and there is not a solution in search of a problem. Because if you ask me to sign something that I won't do business with somebody else, I'm thinking, well, why are you telling me who to do business with? And are you assuming that I'm going to come up with a fraudulent payment under the table for something I do with them? And I would not appreciate that. So thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a topic? Okay, step up and state your name, please.
I'm Gregory Goodman. My Little Flower Shop, small business owner. La Shana Tova at everyone. Great. I'd have on the record accurate minutes regarding my comment last council meeting, being the city should earmark funding for a dedicated economic development director. From the recent savings, six staff positions were eliminated. Resolution 2024 was and is a direct attack on small businesses and on businesses as a whole. It forces businesses to make a choice who they want to do business with, the city or the city council member if they are a business owner. Like former member, council member the city council member if they are a business owner, like former council member Meg Marker. And it's kind of funny that Realtors exempt from that. Her business clients who have been advertising with her company on a regular basis for decades, like the hotels, casinos, for example, and for the city to immediately impose this ridiculous resolution 2024 on all businesses in the valley who they do business with, it's unethical and likely unconstitutional. As a small business owner, I understand the need to have a business-friendly city and ask for support in hiring an economic development director and overturning Resolution 2024. Additionally, I noted on today's agenda that the city manager and city council will be negotiating with labor officials after this meeting in a closed session. And anything the city manager does must be approved by the city council. We will be watching, and we will see if you are vigilant and responsible with our taxpayers' money. There is a strong support in our community for a designated economic development director. This is not a job to multitask current employees, you know, doing, adding on to their salaries as a piece of disposition. Our city deserves to do this right, and there are specifically trained people who do this. Council members, Mother Nature is not on your side. It is my generation that will live and bear the results of the decisions you have made and are making, not yours. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? That was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. We will now move on to council and board member comments, and I will begin today with council member Michael O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. A couple of things. At the last council meeting, I announced that I would be giving an update on something that a lot of people have asked me about, and that's what goes on at the Frank Sinatra Wash. It is a long-delayed project. So let me give you a little history. For 10 years, there was a lot of discussion about building a bridge there over the wash. Eventually, the city decided that the costs and the aesthetics of the bridge deemed the project impractical, and it was abandoned. However, pedestrian connectivity is very important in the city. It's important for the health and well-being of our residents. That's why we have almost 50 miles of sidewalks and almost 50 miles of bicycle lanes. So the city council directed the staff to investigate doing a locally funded project that could provide connectivity at that intersection in Wolfson Park. It would also connect Wolfson Park Trail with Butler Adams and other trails north of the city. The staff has worked on several proposals and decided that the most logical approach is to extend the south side of the roadway further into the channel to accommodate bicycle and pedestrian access. And here on the screen, you can see a vicinity map showing the neighborhood connectivity. And then we will also show you a conceptual design of the proposed project. This is a little hard to see. The picture of the guy on the bicycle is easier to see. There you go. In April of this year, the staff met with CBWD, Coachella Valley Water District. They manage the federal waterway. And CBWD said that they would consider this as an acceptable project. So where are we now? The project is in the stage referred to as project approval and environmental design. So the next step is to finalize that plan, and the city can seek formal approval from all of the agencies that sign off on the project. It goes without saying that working with multiple jurisdictions, especially with federal waterways, can be tedious and very slow. So that is where we stand at this time. Everyone is eager to get this approved. I wanted to give you an update, because several of you have asked me about it. The pedestrian bicycle project is important. It has not been abandoned, and I'd love to give you an ETA, but I can't. We just have to be patient a little bit longer, but just know that this is going to happen at some point. Secondly, I'd like to remind everyone that we are having the first-ever Rancho Mirage Rescue Rally on October the 12th from 9:00 to 2:00 at the world-famous Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. There's going to be about 100 dogs and cats, I found out today, for adoption with free spaying and neutering and microchipping and vaccinations. We're going to have animal welfare charities there to talk about how to prepare for emergencies with your pets in mind, and how to foster animals if you can't commit to adopting. After all my visits to the shelter, I'm the representative of the city to the animal shelter. I decided we had to do something to help alleviate the overcrowded conditions there. So the staff and Aaron Espinoza at the library and his staff have agreed to help sponsor this great event. So there's going to be refreshments, and there's going to be giveaways, and I hope that I will see every one of you there, and I hope that one of you or several of you might find your new best friend, a dog or a cat, that needs a loving home. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we will move on to Mayor Pro Tem Ted Weil. Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, September 27th, the 8th Annual A Good Men and Women Gala honored distinguished individuals from throughout the Coachella Valley for their generous contributions to the community. We are blessed with some amazing people in Rancho Mirage, and Brandon Weimer is one of them. Brandon, a Rancho Mirage success story, was an honoree at Ronald McDonald House, 8th Annual of Few Good Men and Women, at the Westin Rancho Mirage Golf Resort. philanthropy are already legendary. Thank you, Brandon, for ship and making the entire Coachella Valley an even better place to call home. Brandon has done a great job, of course, with the product Brandini. It is a family love affair. Everyone in his family is involved in it. You can take the picture off the screen now. I have become close to Brandon, and I'll tell you a story that some people here know and others don't. Maybe going back to 2017, Brandon said, can we have lunch today? And I said, of course. He said, I have outgrown my space, and I'm going to have to move. At the time, Brandon was in a building where our iconic In-N-Out Burger rest. He said that I'm going to have to leave. I said, no, Brandon, I don't think you should. The shopping center was in the process of changing hands, and I said, I think you should talk to Erwin Busey, the CEO of Paragon. I knew that the building behind Hobby Lobby, which was then occupied by Tuesday morning, was on a totally separate parcel than the rest of the city. I said, Brandon, what we should try to work out for you is a lease option on that building. You could ultimately move in there, and it would become a very valuable asset for your company. If any of you have been to Brandini now, you know that he manufactures and sells his product out of that building. The long and short of it is, it was a wonderful success. I commend Brandon for following up on it. I commend Paragon for having the wisdom to negotiate the lease and make it happen. We kept somebody extremely valuable in our city. So again, Brandon, you being an honoree was more than honored. Thank you so much. The other thing I'd like to mention is the opportunity that I'm about to describe, and that is, the city has enjoyed a partnership with Rancho Mirage-based Coachella Valley Symphony for the past couple of years. They have produced some memorable shows at the city's amphitheater for the past several seasons. This year, I'm excited to announce that their annual Halloween Spooktacular kicks off the CV Symphony's 32nd annual season on Saturday, October 19th, at 7:30 PM. I'm equally as excited to inform residents and guests that they have the opportunity to experience the award-winning McCallum Theater for a free while attending this spirited Halloween concert, made possible in part through the generosity and partnership of the city of Rancho Mirage. I hope you take advantage of this special opportunity. The McCallum is a very special place in our valley, and being able to take advantage of this and participate and see the symphony is going to be outstanding. I want to congratulate Dr. Lisa Lindley, CEO of CV Symphony and Music Director Partnership. These are, again, two outstanding Rancho Mirage contributors. Dr. Lindley is on the staff at Eisenhower Health. She's in distinguished OBGYN doctor. And if you've seen John Mario, the conductor of the symphony, you will get carried away with how he is so enthusiastic when he's conducting the symphony and how the musicians respond to his moves. It's going to be a terrific opportunity. As I say, this is a free event sponsored by the city of Rancho Mirage at the McCallum Theater. So I thank you all, I hope you will all take advantage of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Council member Mulatto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two quick announcements, and then I have a recognition. First of all, I'd like Mr. Ron Stillman to stand, please. Mr. Stillman has recently been appointed to fill Dr. Kirk Dandridge's spot on the Emergency Preparedness Commission. You'll be sworn in at your first meeting, and we thank you so very, very much for stepping forward. We know, we're very familiar with your work and your dedication, and we look forward to you being part of the team. Thank you, Ron. My next announcement is to congratulate our Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department for a wonderful National Night Out event that was held a couple nights ago. It was spectacular. And thank you to all the vendors and participants and service organizations that came out. I haven't seen a successful event for National Night Out like that in a long time, and it goes to all your credit, along with our wonderful Haley, who organized the event. Thank you. Now, have a little recognition here. It is my pleasure to congratulate the very talented and hardworking director of our Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, Mr. Aaron Espinoza. He's sitting in the audience, and you can just kind of come up and make your way up here so we can, I know you're shy. I don't mean to embarrass you, but we're so proud of you. There are a lot of wonderful things that happen in Rancho Mirage, and this gentleman is another shining example. Aaron was recently named the California Library Association's Member of the Year. If you haven't seen this man in action, I can tell you I have. Not only does he oversee a facility that welcomes nearly 170,000 visitors annually, that also circulates almost 350,000 items from the library's collection. He also oversees the research-grade observatory and globally-recognized Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival, that, by the way, just announced that Bill Gates will be attending. Aaron is also a commission liaison for the Library and Observatory Foundation, the Library and Observatory Advisory Commission, and our city's cultural commission. I can't think of anyone more deserving of recognition and thrilled Aaron's work is being acknowledged. Aaron is receiving his award in a couple of weeks at the California Library Association Annual Conference. And if this isn't enough, there's a little bit more. The California Library Association is also, has also announced that the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory is receiving the PR Excellence Award at the same conference for their hard work and execution of the 10th Annual Rancho Mirage Artist Studio Tour and Pop-Up Gallery. This, by the way, features Rancho Mirage residents that are artists. It looks like Aaron and his team are cleaning up on the library Oscars, if you will. Aaron, on behalf of the city council, our community, and the tens of thousands of readers, young and not so young, that you and the library team inspire daily, we want to say thank you. We're grateful, we're appreciative, and congratulations on being named the California Library Association Member of the Year. It's well-deserved, and our organization is so fortunate to have you at the helm. Your team exceeds expectation. We, as a council, we see your team at work every single day, and like our Children's Discovery Museum and other efforts that are going on in this city, you work the miracles. You make the city just so special. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
You big baby.
We love you, can you tell?
There are a lot of things that I feel like I do well. Speaking about myself is not one of those things, so I'm going to be reading a few of my comments. Good afternoon, city council, our city manager, and our city staff. It's difficult to put into words how honored and humbled I feel standing before you today. Being recognized as a California Library Association Member of the Year is an extraordinary privilege, and I want to extend my deepest gratitude. Over 12 years ago, the city took a chance on me as an accounting technician too, and I don't believe either of us knew what was in store for the next decade. To be honest, I never imagined myself working in a library. But here I am today, standing proud, leading one of the finest libraries in the region. This journey fills me with immense pride and gratitude, pride in what we've built together, and gratitude for the chance to serve the community that values education, culture, and connection as much as we do. Every day, I am reminded on how unfortunate, how fortunate I am to serve this community. Receiving this award from the CLA is an honor not just for me, but for the entire Rancho Mirage team and our community. It reflects the dedication we share in keeping the Library and Observatory a welcoming, innovative, and inclusive space. At the heart of my leadership is a genuine love for people. I see libraries as a place of connection with cornerstones of knowledge, growth, and personal transformation. This belief is deeply personal to me, inspired by my family. To my wife, Karina, who's in our audience, and to our two daughters, Emma and Olivia, who are all avid readers, it is their love for books that constantly remind me of the importance of making libraries accessible and welcome to everyone. Watching my daughters develop a passion for reading strengthens my resolve to ensure that libraries remain spaces where children and families can discover the joy of learning. None of this would be possible without the unwavering support of our city council, our city manager, and our city staff. Together, we have championed the vision and believe in transformative power of libraries. Whether it's through your advocacy, strategic leadership, or commitment to our programs and initiatives, your partnership has been key to every achievement we celebrate today. From fostering accessibility and inclusion to expanding our educational offerings, our collective efforts have created a strong foundation for success. Your dedication to serving the community is deeply appreciated and has allowed the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory to continue inspiring and educating all who visit. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible staff at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. Your dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to our mission inspire me every day. It is your efforts that I have been driven to learn and grow and understand what it truly means to be the leader of the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. lives of our community members has been a constant source of motivation for me. Our success is a collective effort, and I am proud to share this award with each of you. It is your hard work and support that have allowed me to step into this role with confidence, knowing that we are working together toward our common goal. To our patrons, partners, and community members who engage with our services, thank you for your trust and enthusiasm. Together, we are building, building something truly special. I also want to send, or extend a special thank you to Jamie Kabler and the Writers' Festival team. Their unwavering support and commitment to enriching the cultural landscape of Rancho Mirage through the Writers' Festival have been a key part of our success, and I am incredibly grateful to work alongside the talented, the talented team. As we continue to build these, on these accomplishments, I'm excited for the future. There is still much more work to be done, but with the ongoing support of our City Council, City Manager, and incredible staff at the Library and Observatory, I am confident we can reach even greater heights. Together with the community, we will continue to make a lasting impact. Once again, thank you to the City Council, City Staff, and our City Manager for your kind words. Your steadfast belief in the power of libraries is truly an honor to serve alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you for all that you do and all that the staff at the Library and Observatory, thank you for all that they do in making this one of the finest library and observatory installations in this country, one of the best small-city libraries in this country, and we really appreciate your hard work. Thank you, Aaron, and thank you to the staff. Okay, I have a couple of comments that I'd like to talk about today as well. The two items that I want to talk to were, one of them was on our last City Council meeting, it was the conflict of interest issue, and the other is with respect to cell phone towers. So first, on the conflict of interest issue, at the last City Council meeting, council approved a procedure that staff will follow in order to protect the public from the evils of conflict of interest. State law prohibits cities from making contracts with businesses that are owned by a council member. Contracting with council member-owned businesses would raise the obvious potential for elected officials to enrich themselves at public expense. The FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission, which is the state agency that oversees public official behavior, makes it clear that cities and elected officials must take steps to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. The city must also be concerned about making a contract with a business not owned by a council member but, or a council member has the potential to profit from such a contract. The FPPC has in fact opined that this city should not make a contract where such a condition did in fact exist. So for these reasons, staff will now use the form that you see on the screen. Josh, let's put up that form. Staff will now use the form that you see on the screen when doing business with, with vendors. The form asks a very simple, correct question. As a result of this contract or payment, does a current council member or council member's business have a reasonably foreseeable financial interest in the contract or payment? Pretty simple, pretty straightforward, pretty direct. This conflict of interest declaration is good for our residents and good for our business community. Residents want to know that the city is taking reasonable steps to protect against the evils of conflicts of interest, and the Rancho Mirage business community wants the public to know that our businesses operate not only in full compliance with the law, but with the highest ethical standards. So the bottom line is this: Our residents want to spend their hard-earned dollars with local businesses that they know operate with integrity. And the other issue I wanted to talk about is cell phone towers. So in the past, we've discussed the false narrative that Rancho Mirage discourages cell phone towers, and at our last council meeting, there was a member of the public who complained that a cellular carrier did blame the city for failure to approve cell towers. There are no barriers to preventing cellular companies from building towers in this city. No cell site has been denied in more than two decades. Cell towers have recently been approved at the Highway 111 Fire Station and on a building near the intersection of Bapo and Highway 111. It's also the case that the city has approved development of a wireless master plan so that we can assess and correct areas of weak service and take advantage of emerging technologies in order to improve service. So if you don't have copies of the most recent mayor's message that addresses both of these issues, please contact City Hall for a copy or go on the city's website to sign up for future messages. So that ends the council comments for today. It is now time for our City Manager comments. Would you please also go into the consent calendar? And when you get to the consent calendar, I believe Councilmember O'Keefe has something he wants to mention.
Thank you. No comments today. So the consent calendar for the council has three items. Item number one is to approve the September 19th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes. Item number two is to approve the appointment of Ron Stillman to the Rancho Mirage Community Emergency Preparedness Commission. And item number three are demands. Before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take any public comment.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards for the consent calendar. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a consent calendar item? No speakers.
Michael, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
I'd like to pull item number one to make a correction in the minutes.
Do you want to tell us what the correction is, and we can go ahead and approve it?
Well, normally, I don't mind my comments being generalized or summarized because really it's, it's not that important. But in this case, last, at our last meeting, under item number seven, under the action calendar on page four, this is such an important issue about the conflict of interest that I would like my exact quote to be entered into the record as I stated it. So in the fourth paragraph, lines one through three, the accurate statement should read that "Councilmember O'Keefe pledged to do fiduciary duty and always placed the interests of the City of Rancho Mirage above any other personal or private agenda," unquote. Those were my exact words and my exact intent, and you can see it on the video to verify it. I'd like that reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Could I ask you to then, would you like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar subject to that change that you just mentioned?
I move that we approve the consent calendar subject to the change that I just announced.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to public hearings, and the first public hearing is item number four on the agenda. The subject of this public hearing is Environmental Assessment Case Number EA 23-0010, General Plan Zoning Map Amendment Case Number GPZMA 23-0004, and Tentative Track Map Case Number TTM 23-0003, and to deliver the staff report is Planning Manager Ben Torres. Ben?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and City Councilmembers. The 8.42 project site is currently, currently consists of three parcels and is located on the east side of Villa Josephina at the terminus of Victory Drive. The project site has street frontages along Villa Avenue. The existing general plan and zoning designation of the project site is very-low-density residential for 4.91 acres, which consists of one parcel, and medium-density residential for 3.51 acres for two parcels. A 1.5-acre portion of the parcel currently designated as very-low-density acres into 17 single-family residential lots and lettered lots for common areas that include the private streets, landscaped parkways, and a retention basin. The residential subdivision will be gated, similar to other residential subdivisions in the vicinity. Access to the proposed parcels will be provided by the private street, Venduto Way, off of Villa Josephina. The proposed subdivision complies with the city's development standards pertaining to minimum lot size dimensions for the respective zones. The yellow parcels are zoned very-low-density residential and the orange medium-density residential. The proposed single-family parcels will range in size from 12,551 square feet to 22,323 square feet for an overall product density of 2.02 units per gross acre, which resembles other subdivisions of similar size along Villa Josephina. Now, single-family residence architectural plans are proposed as part of this project. The project site is subject to the Section 30 Design Guidelines, which requires a minimum 19-foot landscaped parkway with a meandering sidewalk in addition to other site development standards. Landscaping along the project site, along Villa Josephina and Key Largo Avenue, consists of Sonoran Palo Verde trees, mulga trees, and 14-foot-tall date palms, in addition to a variety of other desert-appropriate plantings like purple trailing lantana. The subdivision's six-foot-tall perimeter walls will be of an eight-inch-by-eight-inch block painted white with 12-inch-by-12-inch breeze block sections along some segments of the wall. A six-foot-tall black metal vehicular gate with various linear openings allows for transparency into the subdivision on both the Villa Josephina main entry and the Key Largo Avenue emergency access gate. In addition, the project's entry along Villa Josephina is further enhanced with four small decorative black metal shade structures and decorative orco plaza stone interlocking pavers in a gray color. A mitigated negative declaration based on Environmental Assessment Case EA 23-0010 was prepared. Mitigation measures were recommended for biological resources and tribal-cultural resources. A notice of intent to adopt a mitigating negative declaration was distributed for a 30-day public comment period, which began on May 6, 2024, to June 4, 2024, with one comment received, and responses to that comment were incorporated into the environmental document. The Planning Commission reviewed the project on September 12, 2024, and unanimously adopted Resolution 2024 PC 06, recommending that the City Council take the following actions: A, adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, approving the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and mitigated negative declaration for the proposed project based on Environmental Assessment Case Number EA 23-0010; and B, adopt Number 4, next in order, approving General Plan Zoning Map Amendment Case Number GPZMA 23-0004, and approving Tentative Track Map Case Number TTM 23-0003. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and I will ask the city clerk to ask for public comment.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on item number four? Okay, please step up and state your name.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers and staff. Mario Gonzalez, GHA Paloma Group, 30875 Date Palm Drive, Cathedral City, California. I'm the applicant. First, I'd like to thank staff, Ben Torres, and Mina for their good work and their time to bring this project before you, and for the city's planning commission recommending approval for our project on September 12th of 2024. GHA has been developing homes and communities in Rancho Mirage since mid-1980s, and we're so excited to work through this process and bring 17 at Josephina to the market. 17 at Josephina is a prime example of a property assemblage, offering a variety of lot sizes, home sizes, and price points in this up-and-coming part of the city, without being a master-plan community, but also being behind the gates of a community. We've reviewed the COAs, and we approve them, and we agree with staff and the planning commission, and we humbly ask that you approve our project. Although we are confident that you guys will approve the project, we are challenged in this area, Section 30, where there is a very lack of services, specifically IID, and we hope that we're, can be part of the process and at the table to help in that process. I understand that there is some efforts being made for affordable housing, which we greatly support housing. We build for Habitat for Humanity, and we also are the St. Jude Home Builder for the desert. So we understand the responsibilities of, of working through those processes. But I ask that if we can be part of the process, that we push to get services out in Section 30. We also developed the Scala initially, and that's been the big problem out in that area. That's why it's so underdeveloped, and there's still parcels sitting there. So anyway, I would like to, I do have my engineer in the audience, if you have any questions, my partner, and like to reserve any right to answer any questions or rebut.
Thank you, Mario. And you might be interested in making sure you stay for the last item on the agenda, item number seven, because we might talk about something you may be interested with respect to IID. Do any of my council colleagues have questions or comments? Okay, and I sat in on the last Planning Commission meeting where you spoke as well, and this looks like a, a wonderful project for our city, so thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll be happy to make the motion, and I, too, sat in on the planning commission on this particular project. I thought it looked extremely good and will be an asset to the city. That being said, I will make a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, approving the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and mitigated negative declaration, SCH 2024050169, for the proposed project based on Environmental Assessment Case Number EA 230010, and B, adopt Resolution Number 2024, next in order, approving General Plan Zoning Map Amendment Case Number GPZMA 23-0004, and approving Tentative Track Map Case Number TTM 23-0003.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Five. The subject of Agenda Item Number Five is City Council Vacancy. There is no staff report on this item. This is simply going to be a general discussion by the council as to how we might go about addressing this issue. But before we go to that discussion, we first must hear from the public, so I will ask the city clerk to please ask for public comment.
First speaker is Brad Anderson.
My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live within the City of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on this item. Actually, I submitted written comments for most everything on the agenda today, so if anybody's interested in the public, they can probably look that up. But I, I'm just concerned because there is no staff report. And why would it there be a staff report? This is a very important subject. There probably should have been a special meeting card as soon as this announcement was made by the partying council member at that time. So I have nothing to comment on. I have to listen to the discussion, so hopefully you can allot me time after the discussion to speak, and I would be most grateful. Thank you. I would be most grateful. Thank you.
Patrick Lowry.
Good afternoon once again. I keep looking here. I don't have a good side. Bugs me a bit. Listen, the importance of electing someone is obvious. If we simply keep hiring city council persons, where would you get diversity? Don't we hire the people we know, we like, who look like us, think like us, act like us, are us? It's exactly what we do. Okay? So not allowing us, the citizens in this community, to vote for a new council person, that's just unacceptable. And we need some change. We need to manage lots of stuff in the future. Now, I tend to be in my comments on social media combative. It doesn't make me a bad guy. You know, I just, that way. But I'm not happy with the city council. I don't think you're creative. I think your vision is poor. I don't think you know what to do with this city in five years. And when I ask in social media, guys, tell me why you think the city is great. Now, I love Rancho Mirage. I never get a comment. Tell me what Mr. O'Keefe has done. Never get a comment. Tell me what Mr. Wilde did that makes you think he's so wonderful. I think you're a good fellow. Never get a comment. And now you want me to sit here as a citizen and accept you guys hiring someone again to be a city council person? And that doesn't make much sense. So I continue to say, go Firebirds, and the city should set up another matching fund for the museum, because our foundation would be happy to participate in that. Thank you.
Wayne Avrashow.
Thank you. Wayne Avrashow, Rancho Mirage. There are three options come to mind in terms of filling this vacancy. Two of them I don't think are appropriate. One would be an appointment. As we all know, three of the four council As we all know, three of the four council members were initially appointed. I don't believe that's a cry for democracy. The second option would be a traditional special election with polling places, and I believe that's too costly, simply too expensive. The third option is a viable option, and that is a special election vote by mail only. That option would allow 13,000 residents, about 11,000-plus registered voters, to cast their choice instead of four council members. And that's the decision. It's the residents, 11,000 voters, or four council members. So that's the price of democracy. It's a special election, vote by mail only. Three out of four appointments is simply inappropriate, and my goodness, four out of five, as Mr. Patrick knows the legal expression, would shock the conscience. So I urge you, vote by mail, special election. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? That was the last speaker card.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. All right, so first, I want to speak to the reason for this vacancy. Former council member Marker, who is a business owner in the Coachella Valley, objected to an item on the agenda at our last council meeting. The item she objected to is the conflict of interest procedure that I discussed at the start of this meeting. She voiced her objection and then abruptly resigned from the council and left the council chamber in the middle of that meeting. As a result, we have this vacancy. Now, after she left the chamber, the remaining four council members did the right thing for the people of the city of Rancho Mirage and for our business community, and unanimously approved that conflict of interest measure. Now, I find it difficult to understand why anyone would object to compliance with high ethical standards, but former council member Marker did. Now, when she spoke in opposition to the issue, her comments to her council colleagues were, I guess I would say, less than gracious. It's also the case that she used an example of how the measure might work, but the very example she used was itself against the law. I think the most generous way to say this is that she may not have fully understood the implications of the issue. In fact, she went so far as to suggest that those responsible for enacting the measure should be held accountable by the voters. Well, we do have an election coming next month. In my case, I'd be happy to be held accountable by the voters for casting my vote in favor of a measure assuring compliance with ethical standards. I think most of us would agree that our ethical standards, our character, our commitment to follow a moral compass, and our basic understanding of what's right and wrong are the qualities and values that define us. So, to the voters of this city, hold me responsible each and every single day for the vote that I cast on this important ethical issue at our last council meeting, and every vote that I cast at every council meeting. I am confident that Rancho Mirage voters want council members who understand the profound difference between self-service and public service. My council colleagues demonstrated an understanding of exactly that difference by voting in unison to enact this measure, protecting the public from the evils of conflicts of interest. So, that's why we have the vacancy. Now, what do we do about the vacancy? There are two options. One option is make an appointment. Another option is hold a special election. Those are the two things that we can do. Now, an important timing issue is, as I mentioned a moment ago, we have an election on November 5, and two of our council seats are on that ballot. I think we may want to know the results of that election, or at least what the results are likely to be, so that we can take those results into account in determining the best way to fill this vacancy. So my suggestion is that we may want to delay our decision about how we fill this vacancy until after the November 5 election. If we wait until after November 5, we will have the ability to take those results into account in making our decisions on how to fill this vacancy. That's my opinion. I'd sure like to hear what my council colleagues think about that. Your thoughts? Councilmember Mulatto.
I think out of respect for the election and the people that are running, that we wait until we have the results of that election.
Michael, Ted?
Mr. Mayor, I concur with you. I think that we're talking about a very short period of time here. We're almost, you know, three weeks, four weeks away. That would be the appropriate time to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Michael?
I agree.
Okay, there is no reason to have a vote on this. What I will do is I will direct the city clerk to continue this item to our next city council meeting, and for those of you who would like to make a comment about this issue, the time to do so will be when we ultimately render a decision or put this on the next agenda. So please wait until the next agenda, and we're happy to hear from you. Okay, that closes that item on the agenda. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Six, and the subject is proposal for RMEA programs and program funding allocation. So the staff report, we will start with Deputy of Sustainability Jessica Pulliam, and I think that the city manager, you might have some comments as well. But we'll begin with Jessica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, honorable council members. Today, we will explore new opportunities that Rancho Mirage Energy Authority could offer to provide meaningful cost savings, resiliency, and green practices to our customers through innovative programs. As the energy landscape continues to evolve, it's essential for us to adapt and create programs that empower our community to make energy-efficient choices that not only reduce bills but foster a more sustainable future for Rancho Mirage. Whenever we talk about the Energy Authority, we do like to provide a brief summary of what RMEA is and how it works. RMEA procures energy for our community in the SCE service territory. While we focus on energy generation, think electrons, SCE manages the infrastructure, maintains the power lines, and handles billing and service requests. Your monthly SCE bill reflects this partnership with two distinct charges, delivery and transmission, SCE side of the bill, and generation, RMEA, the energy side. You receive just one consolidated bill with these two distinct charges. There is no double billing. To date, RMEA has delivered over $3 million in rate savings to our customer. In addition, we've distributed more than $1 million in rebates. RMEA remains steadfast in its mission to reduce energy consumption, promote sustainability, and provide cost savings. Through today's proposed programs, we aim to continue to support these goals. Our first program is the Residential Resiliency Battery Program. This program addresses the growing need for energy storage. By offering rebates for battery systems, we aim to help residents store excess energy for later use, making homes more resilient and reducing the strain on the grid. The rebate structure is designed to provide a larger benefit to long-term RMEA participants with an additional adder for those on the green energy option. This program not only supports RMEA managing grid stress but also helps with capturing excess energy during peak production times of the day and shifting that energy to time of peak energy and grid stress. By incentivizing storage, we are helping residents take full advantage of solar energy while increasing overall grid stability. Our next program is the Charge Up Rancho Mirage EV Charger Program. As electric vehicles have become more popular, access to convenient home charging solutions is essential. This program provides rebates for installing Level 2 EV chargers with Wi-Fi connectivity. The rebates range from $150 to $550, depending on how long a customer has been enrolled in RMEA, and again, the additional adder incentive for the green energy option. EVs are playing an increasing role in reducing emissions, and this program supports both the transition to clean transportation and reduction on the reliance of gasoline-powered vehicles. Through this program, we are making it easier and more affordable for residents to charge their electric vehicles at home, contributing to lower emissions and a cleaner community. And finally, the final program proposed is the Residential Energy Efficiency Program. This program encourages homeowners to make energy-saving upgrades, such as improving attic insulation, sealing ducts, and installing heat pump water heaters. The base rebate is proposed to range from 5% to 15% of total project costs with an adder bonus, again, for those in the green energy option. Each household could receive up to $5,500. To determine which upgrades and incentives to offer, we use the Cost Effectiveness Explorer, which was developed by the California Public Utility Commission as a tool to guide policy and evaluate energy efficiency programs. We use this tool for our climate region to identify the most impactful upgrades based on energy savings and cost effectiveness to maximize the benefit for our residents. See the proposed upgrades listed on this current slide. To provide an example of potential impact, installing new ducts in a 1977 home could save a household up to 1,700 on-bill annual savings with a lifecycle savings of over $50,000, in addition to the eligible rebate amount that they would receive based on the cost of install. By investing in these energy efficiency measures, residents can save considerably on their utility bills while reducing energy consumption. In addition to the rebates we propose to offer, many of these improvements may also qualify for a federal tax credit. We are unable to provide any sort of tax advice, but this is another potential opportunity for our residents to explore, and we encourage them all to consult a tax professional to understand how they might benefit from these tax credits. In conclusion, these programs are designed to provide tangible financial and environmental benefits to our customers. They reinforce Rancho Mirage's commitment to sustainability while also helping our community save money and reduce energy use. Together, we can create a more resilient and energy-efficient future for all of Rancho Mirage. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. So that photo of that attic with that horrible condition, was that one of our compliance officers who came back with that photo?
That was Ted's house, actually.
Did you have something you wanted to add, Isaiah?
Nope.
Okay, all right, let's go to public comments. Kristi?
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, please step up and state your name.
Thank you, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. Thank you for that detailed report. Unlike item five, it's had no report. I just think it's, I'm not part of that isolated club. I call myself the one percenters because I never changed over to your Rancho Mirage Power Authority, I guess it is, because I felt, well, anyway, I know the city tried two separate occasions, they hijacked my Southern California Edison account just because I changed some stuff in my account, and it was taken over, and then I had to go and take 30 days to get it back from the city. And I know newcomers just automatically have it, I call it hijacking, but I think that's how you get most of your customers, but I'm just concerned about your length of time. You have it from one to five years. Of the discount could range from 5% to 50%. I don't understand if you really, really care about the planet or what you say you do, would you want them to have that discount as soon as possible so people would take advantage of it? I don't understand that aspect unless, I don't really understand it. And I just, well, anyway, I'll leave it at that. I did write some comments that, I submitted for that, too, and hopefully you have a vote on this one, like you should have had on number five, item five, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the only speaker.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Do I have any council member comments on this item? Go ahead, city manager, Isaiah Hagerman.
So I would like to answer Brad's question, why the difference in the rebate amounts. So this program is a standalone program, right? So the people participating in the program, the revenue and the expenses stay with the program, so these rebates are paid for out of that program bucket. And so as you've been a customer longer, you've participated in the program longer, and you've contributed to the program longer. And so that's why we're recognizing that longevity means that you've been contributing to this bucket longer, and so you're going to get a little bit more of the rebate. Also, what is new for us is the green rate that Jessica was mentioning. I would also like to note that is our basically 100% green energy program, right? So that is an optional program that somebody can opt their account up to, and then your usage, the city backfills with green energy purchases. So in essence, instead of the base plan that saves our customers a little bit of money, you know, that renewable mix is somewhere around 50%, when somebody opts up to the 100% green rate, they're saying, "Hey, I want 100% of my usage to come from green renewable sources." And so the city will take their usage and procure that on the back end. And so there is an additional cost. Obviously, renewable energy is more expensive, so they do elect to pay a little bit of a higher rate to do that. And so all 160 of them have been on that 100% green rate since the inception of the program. So essentially, all the electrical usage of city meters, we've been backfilling with renewable energy, green energy purchases. So individual customers can choose to do that as well. And so for those customers, since they're obviously taking a step in sustainability, we also wanted to recognize them within the rebate programs and find a way to reward them for their additional step towards sustainability of opting up, paying a little bit more money, but doing something that's good for all of us. And so what you'll probably see from our program is, you know, historically for those customers, they got a good pat on the back, and we said, "Thank you very much," but that was about it. So we thought it would be a good idea to incorporate an actual reward and recognition for those customers that have elected to pay a little bit more for green energy for their usage. And so that's why you see those two aspects built in throughout the program. It was a way that Jessica came up with to try to reward those that are, you know, basically taking sustainability efforts on their own by electing to voluntarily opt up to that 100% green energy program.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica, for your work on designing this program. Much appreciated. This is a great example of the city of Rancho Mirage commitment to sustainability and resilience. This battery program, the Charge Up program, and the Energy Efficiency Program are great additions, I believe, because I'm going to vote for it, to our sustainability program. Thank you again, Jessica. Okay, if I have no other comments on this item, may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move. I move that the city council approve the following items, each detailed below, and authorize the city manager or designate to take all necessary actions to implement the programs and program budget, including the approval and execution of associated guidelines, forms, or agreements, subject to the approval of the city attorney, A, Residential Resiliency Battery Program, B, Residential Charge Up Rancho Mirage EV Charger Program, and C, Residential Energy Efficiency Program.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, last item on the agenda today, action item and agenda item number seven. The subject is Agreements with Imperial Irrigation District Regarding the Financing of a Substation to Serve the City of Rancho Mirage. This is the item, Mario, that I asked you to stay for, and to deliver the staff report is city manager Isaiah Hagerman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'm back again. On July 18, 2024, this item was reviewed by the city council, and the action was the authorization for us to fund a deposit for the long lead-time equipment associated with the substation. Well, I'm back again to talk about the same thing. So since then, we still have not put in the necessary deposits to order the long lead-time equipment, and that really drives the whole schedule of when this substation can get built. And so with this concept, this equipment can take up to a couple of years. And so the state of IID service territory is, the majority of their territory in the Coachella Valley is near capacity, meaning the existing substations aren't able to take the load of any new customers. So what's been happening is projects within the IID service territory across the Coachella Valley, and specifically for us in this section, when a simple development comes through that normally if they were under the Southern California Edison territory, they would very easily get service, they're getting $20 to $30 million letters from IID saying, "Build us a substation, or else you don't have capacity." build us a substation or else you don't have capacity. Obviously, for individual projects to try to overcome a 20 to 30 million dollar infrastructure issue, it's impossible and development ceases. And so as we've seen this play out across the Coachella Valley, what has developed is IID has created a process where they are allowing individual developers and governmental entities to try to fund these substations as a group, and then that way they can offer the capacity to individual projects within the service area. So what we discussed back in July is, you know, we were looking at a 100 megawatt substation in the Thousand Palms area, and the staff report on 7-2 has the table of who is IID working with for this 100 megawatt substation, new substation in the Thousand Palms area. Obviously, the existing substation is also in the same area. And so the City of Rancho Mirage is a participant, and we are about 18.75% of that project, which is going to get us about 15 megawatts of the overall 80 that are available. Now, obviously, we're putting in a 100 megawatt substation, but when you see the capacity, it's restricted to 80 megawatts. That 20% is reserved for IID to flex customers around and provide a little wiggle room for, you know, hey, our estimate was this, you end up being this, and it doesn't cause massive problems because they're not scheduling it out to the kilowatt. And so, for example, if a subset of customers go down and don't have power, sometimes they are able to temporarily reroute them to a different substation, and it gets the customer power more quickly, and then they fix the issue, and then put them back on the normal substation. So they do like to leave some flex for estimating and also for power outages. And so what's kind of changed since July is, when you look on that chart, there are some specific developments, and some of those developments don't actually have their entitlements yet. So one of the larger participants is Majestic. It is a project in Thousand Palms, so the county, that is unincorporated county, the county, they're flowing through that entitlement process. So as you can imagine, if, you know, you're a developer and you don't have your entitlements yet, it would be very hard for you to come out of money for a deposit without your entitlements. And so a few people in the group have faced kind of that situation. And so what the three governments did, so City of Rancho Mirage, City of Palm Desert, and the county, we got on a call with IID, and we said, hey, we can understand why some of these developers don't want to put money in right this second without their entitlements. So we, the government, we will front the deposit and get this clock started. Because when you look at how long it takes to get this long lead time equipment, we have a problem today, and it's going to take probably two years just to get this equipment. And then you still have to build a substation after you get the equipment. So if there's a problem today, and we know we're realistically probably three years away from a substation, what is this going to look like in three years? It's only going to be worse. And so we got together with IID and said, okay, fine, county for unincorporated areas, Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage, will each take a third of this deposit. And so the proposal before you today, and what's changed since I came in July and asked for approval, is instead of, you know, everybody throwing in money right now that's on that chart on 7-2 of the staff report, the three governments are going to step ahead of it and say, let's start the clock on the long lead time equipment. Now, our total share is 18.75%. So this doesn't change our total share, it just changes the timing of when we're putting money in. And just to estimate, right, this long lead time equipment, it's about 6.5 million, so I'm going to round it up, you know, that's about 2.2 million for each of the three governments. So that's why we're going from, you know, about 1.2 million to 2.2 million, is just the three parties are funding this full deposit instead of everybody on that list. Now, what will happen, and the way that this is working, is as, you know, these other participants get entitlements and, you know, other costs, then they would start to chip in their money as well. It's just right now, this would enable us to order the long lead time equipment, get the deposits in that are necessary, and start this two-year clock on just getting the equipment. There's also a need to become, you know, there are many other substations that are trying to get planned in the Coachella Valley. And so another word of caution from IID was, you know, I think in total, they had about nine different substation conversations going on throughout the Coachella Valley, and they said, whoever gets in first is better off from a timing perspective, because as those orders start to get in, right, then you begin to compound a very long lead time issue with multiple orders. And so in IID's opinion, they said, if you guys can get in quickly by doing this, then it's only to your advantage, and if you get behind a bunch of orders, you might be waiting even longer. And so that was another motivation for the three governments to say, hey, you know, this kind of seems fair. We understand why an individual developer wouldn't want to go do this outside of entitlements. And we also obviously talked about the perspective of, you know, what if one of them falls out, right? Meaning, I'm not even going to go try to get my entitlements, this was too hard, and they fold, and now we have a gap, right? So one of those participants on page 7-2 falls out. Well, frankly, as we all discussed, within three years, we already have a waitlist. So Mario's here for this conversation, very relevant for him. We've had a skilled nursing facility bring up the same issues with city staff, and there's already a waitlist of people trying to engage in this process. So we felt like that risk was pretty mitigated by, not only do we have a waitlist starting right now, but in three years, what is this going to look like? And frankly, you know, if you're not getting in with, you know, this current process, you're probably even further out. Now, to be very clear, this doesn't fix in the entire section for Rancho Mirage, right? This is a relevant first step. So what IID's responsibility is, is they're maintaining the waitlist and the participant list. And so what we've encouraged our projects to do in Rancho Mirage is engage with IID, because they are the ones that are going to say, okay, you know, here's the next participant, because they are maintaining that waitlist. And so the additional advantage is with our money, right, we're securing 15 megawatts. And even beyond that, you know, what IID is saying is for these smaller projects that we've seen, so, you know, residential development, IID believes that even outside of the megawatts that are specific to Rancho Mirage, that this substation will also allow them to feel a little bit more comfortable to consider additional projects that are smaller in nature. And so, you know, kind of going back to that concept of they do keep, you know, a percentage of the substation for flexing, and hey, you know, we're a little off, we were, you know, here. Obviously, when you look at the service territory, generally, there's just more solar and things of that nature now, which is all great for alleviating kind of these capacity issues. And so IID has also indicated that, hey, even if somebody's not on this list, and they're a small enough project, we might be able to also, you know, knowing that we have a 100 megawatt substation coming, we'll probably feel a little bit more comfortable in sharpening our pencils a little bit, maybe letting a few more projects through. So the specific request that we're asking for is to authorize us, kind of like you did in July, but this time, basically, we're asking for a third of it through the government. So county's going to take a third, Palm Desert's going to take a third, we will take a third, and we'll put in the deposit money for this long lead time equipment to start the two-year clock. Now, we're still on the hook for a total of 18.75%, but as you start to kind of get through the project and this waiting period, essentially, more money will start to flow in, and so the process will recognize that the governments came in early with more than their fair share, and so then they'll get more from other participants later on. And so the next cycle of payments, you would see a much lower commitment from the three governments, because we've already overfront loaded more than our fair share of the deposit. And that's how they'll make us whole. So it doesn't change our total commitment, it's just really the the timing of that. Frankly, you know, this section and all of IID service territory, you know, there's some work to do, but to expect any individual developer to come in and overcome a substation is just not realistic. Development will cease within this section if we don't do something to get another substation built. And obviously, in this current conversation, you know, IID is planning for the expansion of this substation. And so there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes where it's not a total finalized plan when it comes to what does the future look like at this site as they get more people on this waitlist. But what we are recognizing is it takes two years to get this equipment, so let's start that clock now. But they are definitely anticipating the ability beyond this original 100 megawatt facility that we're talking about today with, let's build enough space and everything that we can continue to expand capacity within this area, because when you look at the amount of space that's available for development, you would expect that there would be more demand in this area as we go in time. So that's the request from staff, is to allow us to take a third of this deposit so that we can start the clock.
Okay. So to be sure that we all understand, as we think about and make our comments, we have already approved the 5.1 odd million. It's already approved. We've already approved the initial deposit of 1.2 million. It's already done. All we're at, all staff is asking for in this case is to increase that initial deposit from 1.2 to 2.2. So it's simply a timing adjustment. We've already approved the 5.1 and the 1.2. Okay, let's go to public comments. Kristi, please.
Thank you. Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage, where I live now, anyway. But I guess to be honest, we're really doing this for that apartment complexes, so that city-approved co-income development that the city wants to take. I think they had a special meeting just to make that happen right away. And really, that's why this substation's coming in. Again, not again, but the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, I'm one of two people from the general public that goes to those meetings for the past three years, and that's when you should have did this. I'm not saying this is a good idea, I'm kind of, I'm opposed to it, actually, because you're using the city resources for, to spark development, which is not unheard of, but in this case, I just, I'm just worried because we have a city government right now that I'm really concerned about, and this type of, I wouldn't be surprised if we have a candy maker possibly going in up there. It's just kind of who you know, and I'm worried about that aspect. This is my belief. And like I said, the Coachella Valley Energy Commission, that little associate or commission, I mean, it's run through the coal commissions, and that's a little hidden gem of the three cities, too, because I think the last public meeting you had, not to sidetrack, was posted on a Friday for a Monday meeting, unheard of, and I never got any notification, and I probably would have been the only person that would have went to that meeting, but I'm just concerned about that aspect, and that's the trust factor of the city government that I really have an issue with. So I think we need to sit back on that. I'm gonna, I have to go, but I know this, how this is going to play out, but I'm just, I'm opposed to this type of expenditure, even if we are sharing it with three other cities, because it's kind of, I think it's kind of unheard of for a city government, especially the county, to do this. I mean, we got the arena that ran in, that just popped in, that wasn't an issue, but this is, so. And Section 19, that's another aspect that I know some certain individuals have a desert of person for, too, for development purposes. So I'm just concerned about this government and how it's going. So until it fixes itself, Western Mill, probably in November, I think we should hold off, just like we do with the appointments. Thank you.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Thank you. If you could state your name one more time.
Okay. Thank you. Mario Gonzalez, 30875 Date Palm Drive, Cathedral City, California. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this, and thank you, City Manager, for explaining that. And so my first question is, how do I get on page 7-2? So if I could, you know, I've been working with your staff on this, and right now, we're processing in seven of the cities throughout the Coachella Valley right now. We also established a tri-party agreement with four other developers that we just processed a year ago with IID down in North Powhatan, Abinio. So these are all possible, and I understand the timing of all this and how difficult it is to get IID to respond and to talk with you and everything else, but, you know, if you don't have someone or a task force or a subcommittee or supercommittee pushing this thing, it's not going to happen. And I do hear you about the timeline that you have to go ahead and get the parts and everything else, but there's so much work and effort that needs to be done right now with the infrastructure, you know, putting the pipes in, so the pipes and all that stuff can get put in right now. But this is a real problem. It's a huge problem throughout the Coachella Valley, and, you know, obviously, with today's success, thank you, you know, I'm ready to go for my final map, so we're ready to go. We also have about six, seven other properties right around this Josephina property that we just went through, that we're processing, you know, entitlements on, and we own our land, so, you know, we're not waiting, we're not in escrow, we're not doing any of that stuff. So I would like to participate and maybe meet with you, if that's possible, and get a game plan, because I do have relationships with IID for the past 30 years. We also in Prito County, and that's where those guys come from. Those guys really run it from down there. This is kind of like the small operation. But anyway, so if I understood correctly, just a question, Palm Desert, Rivco, and Rancho Mirage are going to participate in this deal. You guys committed 5.7 million. Last time, you were going to offer 1.2, you're asking for 2.2, and then we could be part of that, and that gives you, how many megs you said, 20, 25?
15.
15 megs, okay. So 15 megs, so quite a bit of power. So anyway, but obviously, self-serving, I would like to, you know, be part of this process, and if I could, you know, help out, I would be happy to donate my time, and my staff has really good relationships with IID folks and easy to deal with, but, you know, their hands are tied in many ways, so.
Yeah, so just, you know, kind of give you an answer, that is, get with IID, because they're controlling the group, so the participants, and if some don't act, then they're going to go on the list that have, and it's, you know, what has been communicated to us is, you know, it's based on when people are applying and when their project came to them is going to be the driver so that they can keep it fair. Now, for the 15 megawatts for Rancho Mirage, what that does is, that secures those 15 megawatts for Rancho Mirage-only projects. So we are in essence, kind of owning those shares of power, meaning if something in the county developed before something in Rancho Mirage, they can't take our 15 megawatts, right? That is reserved for projects from Rancho Mirage. So, you know, obviously, we have some affordable housing projects that we are saying, look, yes, that is a component of this, but we did more than what they needed, recognizing that we're going to have some projects coming through. And so what this, you know, we talked about this a little bit in July, I didn't touch on it today, but, you know, the hurdle is, right, the overcoming these huge amounts. But, you know, depending on what's going on, the city can enter into a development agreement and say, hey, you know, you need this much power, reimburse us for, you know, the share that you are taking, right? You're not paying the whole 20 million for the whole substation, you know, you're going to pay for what you need like it should work, right?
Agreed.
So we're, as So we're, as a city, we're saying, yes, we want to secure our, the affordable housing projects that we've approved, but we also went above that to say, we know we're going to have other developments, and so even if they don't get in on the IID-like priority list, then we'll have some excess where we can say, hey, let's, you know, start going through to say, how do we get, you know, this additional power shares that we procured to some of our specific projects? Palm Desert's doing the same thing, right? The county's doing the same thing. You know, as far as the player list goes, that's being dictated by IID, so you would go to them. And, you know, I know we're all in a tough spot, and we wish we weren't here. I wish we didn't have this situation that we're in, but we do. And I have always tried to publicly say that I'm grateful that IID is working with us, and they really are trying to make it so that when people get together, we can overcome this as a group, which takes the burden away from the first developer to do it. And so I am appreciative of their efforts. They are meeting with us very promptly. There was an issue that was raised with the group, and we're all on an 8:00 AM Zoom meeting with IID staff, and then within 24 hours, they were giving us the information from that meeting that we needed. So they've been, you know, very good at helping us try to find a solution to kind of the problem that we all face. And so I think a critical path is definitely stay in tune with IID, and then I'd be happy to meet with you offline and kind of go through specifics, and, you know, I can share with you the timelines we have, but frankly, you know, the one I showed in July is already late, because we were supposed to put in our deposits in the beginning of August. And so here we are today, you know, so we're still probably a few days away from everybody getting the approvals that we need between the three governments. So we're already kind of behind that original schedule, but we are trying to get the deposit in to start the clock.
Well, I appreciate the explanation, I appreciate the offer to meet with you, and I'd love to, you know, and some of the projects we work with IID with right now, you know, for instance, you know, they're asking to bore across the street, some of us in development, huge expense. I mean, so we can create a crosswalk, an intersection, put some pavers down, and dig the hole, right? So a lot of these things, you know, they, you know, they look at them, they design them, and, you know, they want you to follow them, but without someone having that knowledge to, you know, banter with them or challenge them on the designs and so forth, you know, I think that's really important. But anyway, I thank you for allowing me to speak on this, and thank you for inviting me to stay, so I'm glad I did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Kristi. Do I have any council comments on this item?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. At the SEVAG Executive Committee meeting on Monday, this particular item was discussed, the substation. And the bottom line is that if we don't go ahead with this now, costs are going to continue to escalate. The cost of the equipment itself will continue to go up and will cost everyone a lot more money. So it was the consensus there at the Executive Committee meeting that we had to go ahead. Separate and apart from the fact that what has been mentioned earlier is that, you know, we have a timeframe that we're trying to meet as far as the state mandated affordable housing number of units is concerned. We want to stay ahead of that particular schedule, and therefore, we have, in my opinion, no choice but to go ahead and get started and make this deposit. So I think it behooves us all to move forward on it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Anyone else? Okay, well, it seems to me that I agree with the mayor, Potem. We have limited choices here, but I'm in favor of approving the extra $1 million in deposit. Like I said, we have already approved the 5.1 million, so that's done. We're simply changing the timing here and spending, instead of 1.2, now we'll spend 2.2. And it is the case, if we don't approve some way and cooperate with other government agencies to find a way to build this substation, development in that section of Rancho Mirage just might stop. And that's not good, as Mayor Potem says, with respect to our affordable housing project. Okay, may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'd be happy to make the motion that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into agreements approved as deformed by the city attorney with Imperial Irrigation District, IID, for one-third of the total deposit on the long lead time equipment for the IID substation.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Kristi. I am about to recess into closed session. Before I do, I will ask the city attorney to please review the discussion items for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be convening in a closed session for the item before you on the agenda, and that's the conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6A, Designated City Labor Negotiator Isaiah Hagerman, city manager, and the employee organization is Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
Thank you, Colin. We are back in session, and I will ask the city attorney to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action taken today.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.